Good afternoon, everyone. The December 13th work session of the Henrico County School Board will now come to order. Couple of things before we get started. You'll notice that Mr. Pike has not arrived yet. He will be here shortly. He had a double meeting today, so he'll be here in a little bit. And we're going to change up the agenda just a bit since we have some guests from the county side. As soon as closed session is over, we're going to go ahead and get the report on the Joint Salary Compression Committee. We'll go ahead and move y'all up, and so you don't have to wait too long. And we'll go through closed session as quick as we can. So we are gonna change the agenda accordingly, and so that leads me to board members. You've had now the opportunity to look at the updated agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended, excuse me. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I say moved to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Montgomery. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved, as amended.
Good job.
And we're gonna start our meeting with a closed session. Hold on one second. Closed session from discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 and A7 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, the admission and discipline of specific students, including a request for waiver of tuition, and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to probable litigation involving personal injury where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Is there a motion that we move into closed session for these purposes?
They move?
Moved by Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Montgomery. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now in closed session. Okay, we will reconvene. Is there a motion to certify that only those items detailed in the agenda for the closed session were discussed?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Montgomery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cox. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The closed session has been certified. And like I said earlier, we're going to rearrange our agenda a bit, so Mr. Hinton, come on up. Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
And Mr. Hinton, I'm gonna...
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have an introduction of any kind of Dr. Cashwell?
I was just going to let our viewers and the folks with us know that this is a Joint Salary Compression Committee update, and we appreciate you being here for that update this evening. Mr. Hinton.
And Mr. Hinton, I want to say welcome, and we're glad you're here. We really appreciate you taking the time. And before we start, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the county manager and the Board of Supervisors for spearheading and working with us to do this work. Y'all have taken on a huge task, and I know there's a committee, and you're gonna talk about the committee, and who was on that committee, and that kind of thing, but it's been a very cooperative process, which I think is wonderful, and it's a really transparent way to address some problems, move forward, and I think it's just a really good thing we all took a step back after the joint meeting we had with the Board of Supervisors to do this the right way, and to do it with accurate information and numbers. So we really appreciate you being here to tell us what the committee found, and so we're very anxious to hear, but go right ahead. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I appreciate those comments, and actually, I think you just stole every bit of my first four slides.
(laughing).
But you're absolutely right. It has been a very collaborative effort between our schools and general government staff, and I do think you'll be pleased with what this committee has found, some of the recommendations they'll put forward. We had this presentation on Tuesday evening with the Board of Supervisors. I'll be 100% honest, I'm not sure the entirety and the importance of what we talked about was communicated in the press this morning.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a personal note, and, you know, I look forward to getting to the presentation, and I think there's a lot here, and there's a lot of work that was done. And you can also see, we brought a number of folks with us this evening. Most of our committee showed up, and I'll get to introductions in a moment if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
And if you want them to, we could bring them up. No? Okay.
(laughing) So, thank you again, and I'd like to begin the evening's presentation by reminding again the school board of the actions and the process that has led us here today. And as the school board members during budget deliberations in March of this year, a recommendation was made by a board member to fix, and I use the word fix loosely a little bit, teacher compression with a lump sum allocation to our school system. And that recommendation had a number of flaws. As we discussed at that time first, and you'll see, you'll hear Mrs. Reed, Paula Reed, our Director of Human Resources, talk about it in a moment. You can't simply fix compression. Compression will always exist, though it can be mitigated, and we'll talk much more about that in a moment, and you can mitigate that with both short-term and long-term actions, and you'll see both short-term and long-term actions recommended in this presentation. Second, a thorough and comprehensive analysis, a study if you will, of compression had not taken place at that time, and we'll talk about it in a moment. Frankly, this comprehensive study of compression is the first in this county's history, where we have the schools and general government, so it was quite the effort. The dollar figure that was being suggested at that time had not been properly vetted and was based on a number of assumptions regarding actual teacher pay. Madam Chair, members of the board, it is highly unusual, especially in this county, in Henrico County, for a request of that size to be brought forward for consideration without the appropriate vetting. And as a result of these budget conversations in March, a joint meeting, as you all are very well aware, was held in May, excuse me, it was in April, with the Board of Supervisors and the school board, and in that meeting it was agreed upon that both, by both elected bodies, that the subject of salary compression needed to be meticulously studied. And with that, in May of this year, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved a resolution authorizing the county manager to establish a committee consisting of both schools and general government employees to first, examine the possibility of salary compression amongst general government and schools' employees, and then second, develop a multi-year plan to address such salary compression, all while maintaining a unified pay plan. And behind me again are most of our committee members, and I would like to introduce each of them that are here. I believe we are missing several, but you'll see that myself and Mr. Sorenson co-chaired that committee. Paula Reed, Director of Human Resources, is right here. Ms. Janine Chuning, I know you all are very familiar with Ms. Chuning, who is with us this evening. Sergeant Jim Livingstone, he's the President of the Henrico Fraternal Order of Police, and Jim is here with us this evening. Dr. Tiggin, needs no introduction. Ned Smith, our Finance Director, I don't believe Ned is with us this afternoon. Reggie Davenport, I know you're also very familiar with, Principal Glen Allen High School, Reggie is with us. Gene Moore, who is our Assistant Director of Planning, and I don't believe Gene is with us. And then Jason Vick, who's our President of Henrico Professional Firefighters Association, is back here as well. So you can see the diversity of this group. Schools was heavily represented, public safety was represented, finance, human resources, of course, because without their guidance, we would be still analyzing a lot of data and not knowing what we're looking at. So staff began the study in May, per the board's resolution, in May of last year, and it's taken more than six months, six months to appropriately analyze this subject. And I'd like to take some time to acknowledge some individuals. I don't believe any of them are here with us this evening, but there were two staff from the school side, Mr. Sean Terry and Debbie Hargrave, who spent countless hours on the school side analyzing 6,700 employees, which was quite the task, as you can imagine. And, you know, the amount of time we put into this, and we'll talk more about it in a moment, the intent of studying each employee, one by one, looking at all of it, was to give the study the utmost credibility. That's what was important, the utmost credibility. From our general government side, Ms. Reed had two, her staff, two of our class and comp staff, the effort they put forward from May through November, they actually spent every single Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, each and every week, for six months, on this one project, saving Friday for their other day-to-day work. I know they're catching up, and they're breathing a sigh of relief that it's done, but they did a tremendous, tremendous job. That was two ladies by the name of Tammy Parsley and Terri Higgins. Again, I can't underestimate the amount of work that those four individuals put into this effort. And I would suggest to you that the approach, that staff have taken to study salary compression, the approach that was demanded by the Board of Supervisors and the school board, thoroughly analyzing every single employee, schools, and general government, in an effort to bring you suggestions and recommendations based on real data, Miss, as you mentioned earlier, is how Henrico does business. And with that, I would like to invite Ms. Reed to come up and talk about what compression is, what compression is not, and also to explain to you what we found on the general government side of the House.
Thank you, Brandon. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with you this afternoon to talk about salary compression, some of the general government findings, and then we'll be sharing some information with you about our recommendations for moving forward. So to begin, I want to just briefly talk about what salary compression is, to make sure that we're all on the same page. So essentially, it occurs when employees with less experience or shorter lengths of service earn as much or more than employees with longer service. Quite honestly, it is the most common pay phenomenon in organizations. It is not something that is unique to local government or school systems. You will find it in every organization across the country. And honestly, it's usually more of a problem within the private sector, and so it is unique that the public sector would take an opportunity to study compression, and more importantly, to do something about the issue. There's no single cause for compression. Ironically, some of the attraction tools that we use as HR professionals and good organizations actually cause compression sometimes. If starting salaries increase without taking into consideration the impact on employees who've been here longer, you'll have compression. If you have rising salaries for hot jobs or some of those hard-to-fill positions, you'll have compression. And sometimes, the way we implement salary increases in organizations causes compression. You will know that some years we will give step increases, other years we'll adjust our starting salaries to be competitive in hiring new teachers and new employees, and sometimes those decisions, while many times being the right decisions, will create some compression. So if that's not bad enough, let me also tell you that there is no fix for compression, and I liken it to doing laundry. When you do laundry, you start with a big pile, you might spend the whole day washing clothes, and when you go to bed that night, you still have dirty clothes in the hamper. So we are here to tell you that while we have studied compression, while we are recommending some fixes for it, we're always going to have compression, and again, all organizations do. So some compression must simply be acceptable, and we'll talk to you a little bit in our time together about what compression we have found to be acceptable as we move forward. It is also important, when you look at studying compression, that you look at the causes, because the causes that have created compression within organizations will many times dictate the ways that you mitigate the compression moving forward. The general government side of the House, most of the compression that we found was due to policy changes over the years, where perhaps compression had not been taken into consideration as much as could have been. On the school side, you'll find that most of the compression that was found was a result of hiring practices, and you'll hear Mr. Sorenson talk about some ways to mitigate that in the future. So not only did we do an in-depth, comprehensive study of positions, but we looked at the root causes to make sure that the solutions we were bringing forward were going to be the right solutions. In addition to looking at what salary compression is, I think it's worth our time to look at what salary compression is not. So it is not a comparison of salaries to regional counterparts or market analysis or benchmarking study. Those things are very important, but that was not a part of this committee's task. I'm sure that your HR department spends time looking at those things, I know we do on the general government side of the House, to make sure that we are competitive when it comes to the salaries that we offer in comparison to other localities, but that was not a part of this particular study. So how do you mitigate compression if you're not able to actually fix it and solve the problem? There's some ideas that you'll see on the slide. Certainly, as you are able to hire new employees at an appropriate step, that helps to alleviate that. Really, making sure that most hires are at step one is what should be the goal, and that will alleviate compression moving forward. In order to do that, sometimes you have to regrade positions to make sure that those salaries are competitive to what the market dictates, and that also helps to mitigate compression. Making sure that when we have annual salary increases, that periodically they would result in a step increase, because again, that creates some separation between employees that have been with us for a while and newer employees who may have more recently been hired. And certainly, a periodic review or correction is necessary any time you suspect that you might have pockets of salary compression. We see this many times on the general government side with our medical positions, that sometimes it just warrants that look. In addition to that, a continued focus and implementation of career development programs has really proven to be a great tool in mitigating compression. On the general government side, we have had career development programs in place since the mid-'90s. I just this week approved the 52nd Career Development Plan, so we are constantly looking at positions and looking at ways that we can make that opportunity available to even more employees. And so these are just a few of the general ways that compression can be mitigated. I do want to share briefly some information with you about how this comprehensive study was involved and some of the things that it entailed. So again, for the general government side, we analyzed a little over 4,100 positions, or right at 4,100 positions. And what we did is a similar approach to what school staff did as well, basically looking at the length of service for every employee, the length of time that they've been in certain positions. I think on the school side, they looked at total teaching experience, looking at whether positions were supervisory or not. If so, what was the tenure of the people reporting to the supervisor? What were their salaries? Making sure that there wasn't any hidden compression there. And also looking at the education and the experience that someone might have brought to the role from somewhere else when they were hired. So for those first few bullets, pretty much was a spreadsheet review, a study of those very objective factors. And then for the last bullet, it quite honestly involved spending hours going through applications, resumes, employee files, to get a good handle on the experience that folks might have brought from other places. I do want to share briefly with you some of the general government findings. I know you are eagerly anticipating seeing the schools' findings as well, but I think that it's important for you to see what happened on our side, too. So yes, like every other organization, we did have some compression, which we found. It was relatively little, given the general scheme of things. So of those almost 4,100 positions that were analyzed, 608 were found to have needed some adjustment in order to mitigate compression. That's about one out of every seven general government employees who was found to be compressed. If you break that down a little bit further, of those 608, you'll see that 434 were public safety employees, so the overwhelming majority of the compression was in public safety. In addition to that, one out of four public safety employees were found to be compressed, if you look at it that way. And just some summary information, only one out of every seven employees was identified as experiencing compression. When you take public safety out of the mix, it was one out of every 13. So essentially, about 93% of non-public safety general government employees were found to not be salary compressed. I think there are many reasons for that. One of the reasons is having a centralized HR team who can partner with departments in order to fill positions and to utilize class and comp expertise as you're making hiring decisions and promotional decisions. That's not something that I can take credit for individually. It has been an approach that the counties had for decades, and I'm very fortunate to have a strong team that works closely with the departments that we serve. Brandon's mentioned Terri and Tammy on our staff, who have just been very influential in this study.
I'm gonna jump in and just ask one real quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Public safety, I'm assuming, just for clarification, that's police, fire, EMS...
And sheriff.
And sheriff. Okay, I wasn't sure about sheriff. Okay, thank you.
So another way to look at the general government findings, as well as to look at the price tag associated with fixing the compression issue for the moment, is that the total cost is $1.9 million for the general government fix. $1.3 million of that is for our public safety employees, and the average cost per employee is a little over $3,200. So we appreciate the opportunity that the school board and the Board of Supervisors gave us to look at this very important issue. I think you'll be excited about some of the recommendations that we'll have moving forward, and I'll turn it over to Chris Sorenson, who'll give you more detailed information about the school's findings.
Good afternoon, ma'am. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I am gonna walk through the school findings with you. I have about 12 slides to go through with you, but before I get to the charts, the numbers, I kinda wanna go through the background a little bit. So I am gonna talk about a two-phase approach. Ms. Reed and Ms. Hinton talked about different phases, the short-term and the long-term, as the slide indicates. So for the short-term, and I'll go through more detail in subsequent slides, but for the short-term, we really looked at the current placement scale. Our goal was to mitigate some of the compression that you'll see on some subsequent slides, to really get a good base going forward. So that was our first step, to look at the placement scale. And then we looked at career ladders, and we're just really excited about the career ladder opportunity, what that does, not just for compression, but what it does for our employees and the services we provide to our students. So let's talk about placement scales for a minute. I think you guys may be familiar with this, that, you know, every school division of the Commonwealth has some type of placement scale. Typically, they're based on years of experience exclusively or mostly based on years of experience, and there are steps and pay grades based on those years of experience. Some school divisions separate the salaries from years of experience by a dollar amount. It could be a few dollars or a lot of dollars, depending on the needs of the division. More typically, you'll see a percentage increase between the steps and the years of experience. Again, it could be a small percentage or a large percentage. The percentage could change based on where you are on their pay scale. So there are lots of different pay scales out there, but everybody has one. Our pay scale is based on years of experience, and again, look at in a couple of minutes, you'll see the compression on it, but the way we use our pay scale is we use it as a minimum placement. And then we look at if a teacher has National Board Certification or is gonna staff a content area that's hard to fill, there may be additional steps, but we use ours as a minimum placement. What our goal was to have a systematic approach. So I talked a minute ago about some divisions have different increases. We wanted something that was uniform to meet our needs. So we wanted a systematic scale going forward, and as we, after we developed the scale, we wanted to move employees to the new step. So if you were below, if your current step was below what we're recommending on our new scale, we advanced you one, two, or three steps to get to the new placement. If, for whatever reason, you were above the step that we're recommending, we're not recommending anybody lose steps or anybody lose compensation as part of this. But that was our process for the short-term approach. This is a really interesting slide, and I would ask if you could keep this slide in mind as we go through the presentation, particularly talking about career ladders and badging, but about a third of our teachers have zero to five years of experience, and then another 774 have six to 10 years of experience. So roughly half of our teachers have less than 10 years. That's total teaching experience, not just within Henrico, but total teaching experience. So that's a really, you can see where folks could be clustered on a pay scale just by this chart alone. And again, if you could please keep this in mind as we go forward, I think we'll come back to it in some of the conversations. This is our current teacher placement scale. Some of the compression levels kinda jump out at you, years one through six, step three. The horizontal bar at the bottom is years of experience, the vertical would be the step placement. So you can see one through six is compression, seven through 13 is compression, then there's a little bit of increase in there. When you go back to 17 through 21 years of experience, again, there is compression. So that's what we started with, and our goal was to mitigate that. Again, we weren't trying to eliminate it, just mitigate it, put it in manageable pieces moving forward for our base. So this is what we are proposing. Once you get to one year of experience, there are level three-year increments. Again, we wanted that consistency and uniformity moving forward. We thought three years was manageable. Also, a teacher on a continuing contract has a three-year formal appraisal, although they get feedback and encouragement from their administrators constantly, they are on a three-year cycle for the formal evaluation. So we thought that three-year played into this approach as well. And so this next slide compares those two. The blue bars are the current step, the orange bars represent our proposed. So you can see that a lot of the increases would take place typically between four years of experience and about 23 years of experience. There are exceptions, there are other things out there, too. Not every teacher at every year got an increase, it depends where you're placed, but that's where most of the adjustment took place in our steps as we moved teachers. To this point, I've really talked exclusively about teachers, but we did look at all of our employees. That was our task, we looked at all employees. It just so happens, because of the placement scale, most of our compression is with our teachers. But as Mr. Hinton mentioned earlier, we did look at over 6,700 positions. 1,930, we believe, we found compressed. 1,912 of those are teachers, so 18 are not teachers, and then so it's about one out of three and a half school employees were compressed. We have requested $3.8 million to fix the compression. Again, as we pointed out through the presentation, it's a moment in time, we need to stay on this all the time to make sure we understand the impact of giving a wage versus a step, some of our hiring practice, we really need to stay on this all the time, but it fixes it for a moment in time. And I just mentioned that 1,912 are teachers. There were 14 administrators, they're all school-based administrators, and there were four bus drivers. So let's talk about, so that's the short-term, that's fixing the base, fixing the placement scale going forward. Let's talk about the long-term, and that would be career ladders. Again, as Ms. Reed mentioned, it does help mitigate compression, but it also opens up a lot of opportunities for our folks, and that's what we're really excited about. I do want to talk about that second bullet point. So when we were going through the process, the committee, we were crunching numbers, we were pulling on employees, looking at data, and we started talking about career ladders. So we said, well, it's kinda out of our area, let's go talk to the folks in PD about career ladders. So obviously, they were very excited, and they were all over, they just couldn't wait to get some direction to move forward. But that second bullet point, you know, we were sitting there talking about it, talking about career ladders, and somebody said, wow, for the first time, teachers can really have more control over their salary. And that just really stuck with us the whole time. It's like, you know, just the way it was said and the message that came through, so that was really an important thing going through, going through the process for us. So career ladders, we don't have an exact, we do have some, we'll talk about what we think it could look like, but we don't have an exact plan. That's gonna take a lot of time to develop, a lot of input between staff, central office staff and teachers, so it's a process to do that. But we do think there will be different pay ranges, and you can advance, just say you need 10 points to advance from a teacher one to a teacher two, and there are different ways you could accumulate those points. So some of the examples could be National Board Certification, if you're teaching at a hard-to-fill school, we do some of this already in different ways, but Aspiring Leader Academy, designation through Department of Education, and also badging. So talk about badging for a second. Badging is a relatively new concept, it's been around for a few years in the K-12 world. Boys Scouts and Girls Scouts have had it for a long time, but in the K-12 world, it's a relatively new concept, and it really allows us to personalize the educational opportunities we provide to our staff. Think, if you will, those slides, we talked about earlier, that we have a third of our teachers zero to five, and half less than 10. So think if we created a mentoring badge or a coaching badge, where teachers could get classroom experience, it could be online, it could be in seminars, lots of different ways you get that experience, and then you go out and practice, you coach some of the younger teachers and work with them to show that you've accomplished those competencies through what you've learned. And that together, it could take a year or two to do that, but that could be a badge. With our student population, equity and diversity would be a great badge, classroom management, there are all types of badges that either we could create or have been created already that teachers could choose from to meet their personal needs and the needs of the division. And as you complete those badges, you could accumulate points, and you could advance through the career ladder. So it's really an exciting thing. So, it's really an exciting thing for us to do. So, again, if you would please note that word potential is in bold and it's underlined, but this is just something we laid out. You know, we didn't wanna lock down, this is definitely what it would look like, we're not close to that point, but we wanted to give people an idea of what it could look like. So, we envisioned four different levels, that left-hand column, a teacher one, two, three, and four, and then different criteria. And again, you're mixing and matching things. So, right now, we have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. You're only gonna advance if you get a master's degree. This will allow other opportunities to advance through the pay scale. And again, these are all opportunities that improve the person personally, their knowledge base, and improves what we provide to our students. And then, I'll be glad to answer any questions now or later, but that's our proposal, the short term and the long term, and we're just super excited to be before you presented it today.
Any questions before we move forward to the recommendations?
Madam Chair, quick question.
Reverend Cooper?
In this first part of your presentation, you painstakingly made obvious that the statement is underlined, the fixes only will fix it for a moment in time. Have you all defined the moment in time, know that you're gonna comprehensive review it every three years? What are we saying, it's within the purview of the three years? Is it, you know, is that kinda the snapshot, that three-year timeframe?
Sure, so what we're gonna talk about in a second is this, the pay committee that has been working on this is gonna stay together as a team to continually look and make recommendations over certain time periods to make sure we're on track.
So, in essence, we won't have a moment in time because we're constantly reviewing it, it's evolving all the time.
That is correct. So, the way, if we give a step versus a wage, that could impact compression. If we have a hard-to-fill position, hire people at different levels, that could impact compression. So, we always have to look at where our staff is, is the placement model that we've laid out, to make sure we're in alignment with it.
Well, I'm excited, I mean, you look at, on the current scale, for 13 years, a teacher from 30 years to 43 years is at the same level. 13 years. I mean, how does that make you feel, knowing that you, year after year, there's no opportunity to advance higher? So, I'm really excited, like you are, to see the incremental steps along the way that kind of totally mitigates that problem.
Correct, yes, sir.
And Chris, I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
All right, Mr. Montgomery.
Yes. So, what role do the current stipends play in this? Because a teacher, regardless of the number of years, could be a department head, or an assistant coach, or sponsor one of the academic teams, or something of that nature. So, and that's not really a career ladder, because you only have that while you're filling that position.
Those are extra duties.
Correct.
So, that's something we'd have to look at. If you take on leadership roles, do you get points for that to advance in the career ladder? I don't have a specific answer for you now, but that is something that we would look at.
Mrs. Cox? I, too, am excited, as I think we all are at this, and applaud you all for your efforts. I know this committee worked really hard on this. Some people thought it was a long, drawn-out process, but in fact, I think y'all worked rather fast, considering everything that you had to analyze and go through and come up with. I am super excited, though, about the teacher career ladders. I think that is something that teachers that I talk to and principals alike have been asking for these opportunities, and I think it really will affect a difference in our retention and our recruitment, as well as the teaching and learning. I mean, our students are gonna benefit from this. My question is, I know that, you know, this is new here, but what are the next steps for us to really define what our career ladders are going to look like?
Right, so, we're already with Tracy and her staff, we're gonna get with them and start laying out the criteria. So, this is unique in Virginia, we're not aware of any other division that does anything like this. But there are divisions elsewhere in the country that are doing things like this. So, Tracy's aware of that, we're gonna look at some of those models and see how those divisions have rolled out their programs, and then we'll work on a model. Again, we don't have a lot of specific answers right now, but we do have models that we can follow, we have ideas that we've talked about. And of course, the county has great success with career ladders.
Yes, yes, they do.
So, they're gonna be a great partner looking at this going forward as we roll this out.
And I've got a follow-up to that. So, for then our potential, our career ladders, then are we doing that, is that gonna be part of the purview of this committee, or is this gonna be in-house with Dr. Weston?
I think it's gonna be both, right? Because the expertise lies with Dr. Weston. And so, I think, one of the great things about the committee, I think we all had aha moments, the school people had aha moments, but the county, and the county, but the schools is a great sharing of information.
Wonderful.
So, I can only see that when Dr. Weston starts working on this, that at some point we'll all get together to try to work things through and understand all the components.
Do we have an end game of, you know, when, where? I mean, we're thinking six months, are we thinking for July 1? I mean...
No, that's a good question.
I'm nudging here a little bit.
The compression piece, the plan now is that would go into effect July 1, fiscal year '20. The career ladders, we have to phase them in because we don't really understand the financial impact of that right now. But we would start rolling them out in fiscal year '21 is our goal now.
Thank you.
And we don't know if we roll out a few or a lot, again, we don't understand the financial impact, so we need to understand that piece of it as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So, in other words, we're in uncharted waters and...
We certainly are.
But, I mean, personally, I think it's just such a bold move for Virginia. I mean, having been a teacher for a long time, it's just the thing that teachers wanna be treated as professionals, and in other professional professions, you have the ability to progress in your job, and this allows our teachers to do that for the first time. So, to me, that's really exciting. But I do have a question about the career ladder part. You're saying that you think the monitoring of it, and where the teachers get their badges and all this, do you see this coming under HR or with Tracy and her group under? I'm just curious, do we have the personnel? I'm sitting here thinking, who is going to monitor, who has teacher one, teacher two, and it got these points in the badges? And somebody's gotta do all that work on our side and the county's side, so I'm assuming we're going to have to expand and find some way to monitor all of this.
Of course, so, we talked about that some this morning. There are services you can get to help you track the badges, so that's one thing we would certainly think about. You can track them online, there are companies that provide those services. As far as who would be responsible of Dr. Weston's shop or HR, it really might be even broader than that. So, like, would equity and diversity, would Ms. Manns help with that? Certainly helping the creation of it, but would she help monitoring it? Because it is a small staff, we don't really know where exactly it's gonna fall, but we have already started having those conversations. And we talked about some of the resources we would need to make sure that we can monitor, whether it's in-house or through an outside company.
Okay. So, more to come on that part of it.
Come on that, there's a lot more to come on all of this, yes, ma'am.
And I'm assuming that since part of this falls under professional development, we are going to, I'm just gonna put a plug in for this, revisit the issue of tuition reimbursement, and how do we help our teachers advance? Because you can't just say, "Here's a ladder to advance," and give them no method to do it. So, I'm hoping that's on the table for discussion as well.
Without a doubt, it is. But one thing that is important to that point is, so, we've talked, I've talked to the student tenant about this, keep her up to date on what's going on with the committee. So, one of the things that's been very important to her is, in fact, Reverend Nelson brought it up Tuesday night, as a matter of fact, is that there has to be different opportunities for people that may not have the resources to pay for class. So, we need things that can be done online, so if you have a family, you can do this from home, you don't have to go to a seminar or a conference, you can do it at home. If you don't have the resources, and our budget certainly won't be able to accommodate every request.
Right.
Are there free or very inexpensive opportunities as well? So, this has to be available to all employees regardless of the circumstances.
Well, and we've had instances in the past where professional development was done onsite, and our teachers were able to participate in their homeschool or go to another school to do it. And so, I'm assuming we're just gonna look at all of those options, everything that we can put on the table for giving people the opportunity to grow.
You're right, you're absolutely, we don't wanna create an opportunity everybody's excited about, but they can't reach it.
And they can't reach it. So, yeah, so I'm glad that's there. Okay, good. So, any other questions, board members, before we hear next steps? Okay. Mr. Hinton, I think you're back up. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll try to be brief and wrap this up, but I agree with all the sentiment and the comments that I've heard and our personal excitement from the committee. What Mr. Sorensen and the Compression Committee have developed regarding teacher career ladders is truly unique, as he noted, and as you are very familiar. In fact, I think it's been noted that no other school system in the state of Virginia has anything like this. And I think I heard that you might find a place in Texas, or there aren't many jurisdictions across the country even that has something like this. So, this is very unique, and I really think that's a benefit, and it could pay huge dividends for Henrico County going forward. And of course, incentivizing teachers to continuously improve in their profession can only benefit Henrico students. And of course, that benefits teacher pay as well. And then, if there's the hiring of teachers, I mean, how many school systems can say and can promise an aspiring teacher that you can have a career in Henrico County as a teacher and not feel like you have to leave the classroom to have a career, to maintain and sustain a career? We believe that this model could be that opportunity to do so right now, and also as we recruit new teachers out of college, you know, having a piece of paper that says you can follow these criteria, and here's your roadmap to a career in Henrico, I think is, I think it's trend-setting, frankly. And I've actually had conversations personally with other jurisdictions who have called me for keeping very close eyes on what's happening these last few days in Henrico, because they're nervous, frankly. And I think you're setting a new precedent for Virginia and beyond. But in addition to career ladders, other recommendations to mitigate compression include the continuous monitoring of hiring practices, a lot of the things Mrs. Reed mentioned earlier, consideration of how future salary increases are implemented, and certainly how consideration, policy changes, how they impact compression. And to ensure continuity, Mr. Cooper, I believe you mentioned this, one of the recommendations is to develop a permanent working group that consists of schools and general government employees to continue to work together to discuss compression and the topics surrounding compression on a consistent basis. And of course, this group will undertake a comprehensive review of salary compression. I think this is important. Every three years, every three years, we're gonna revisit this topic. I think where we are today, this is the first one we've ever done, so I think where we are today is in a good place. I'm not sure it's gonna be another six-month exercise, it's more dusting off and tweaking a little bit, but this committee is dedicated to examining this compression across the boards, our general government and schools, every three years. And much more than just myself and the committee talking to the school board and to the board, in an effort to cement what we're doing, and cement this permanent working group, it is the recommendation of the committee that we bring forward one resolution for the school board's consideration, one that will also be brought before the board supervisors for its consideration, to cement the working group and the tasks in which they will be responsible. From a timeline perspective, and we've talked to the board supervisors about this, again, but we bring the board a copy of this resolution on January the 22nd of next year, and then two days later, the school board has a meeting, we would bring that same resolution that's signed by the board to the school board as well. So, the idea is to have unanimity across both elected bodies, and I think that's a strong statement to solidify what it is that we're doing, and a strong statement to staff that we're gonna look at this, and we're mandated to look at this on a continuous basis. To conclude this presentation, prior to this analysis, as I mentioned, this has never taken place. This is an exercise, staff put a lot of effort into this, the committee as a whole, we met, I believe, eight times as a committee, there were numerous subcommittee meetings, if you will, where we were, staff were updating each other's staff, school and general government, or wherever we were, providing ideas, suggestions, solutions, and then taking this back to our committee for validation. And when you have such a diverse committee, having that validation from public safety, from finance, from HR, from a number of people in the school system, that says a lot. Having Janine Tuning, for example, representing teachers, and having her validate what it is that we're doing was a strong statement, and it made it very comfortable coming before the school board today, and of course, our board a few days ago. But establishing that working group ensures that we continuously monitor compression going forward. And as Mr. Sorensen alluded, the manager has committed to add $5.8 million, approximately $2 million on the general government side and $3.8 million to the school side to address the now compression, as Mr. Sorensen mentioned, within the manager's proposed budget that comes out in March and will be effective July 1 of next year. So, career development, as Mrs. Reed mentioned, it does help mitigate salary compression, career ladders is what we're talking about, does help, through our experience, helps separate employees' salaries, employees' experience. It's worked for general government for many years, and we believe there could be some great success on the school side as well. And again, I mentioned earlier, I believe something like that will set the new standard for teacher pay in Virginia. And with that as closing, Madam Chair, members of the school board, I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any other questions or comments before we let Mr. Hinton go?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Montgomery.
So, it's all very noteworthy, and it's the result of a tremendous amount of work, I know. We mention often, almost exclusively, it seems like, teachers in career ladders and stuff, but that's not all of our employees, just like public safety officers, who, by the way, are basically one in four experiencing compression, just like roughly one in four of our employees are as well. It's interesting, I think, in many regards, that public safety officers and teachers follow similar career progression, and both their education and preparation, and then the opportunities they have along the way. So, what about, and maybe our folks should address this, too, but what about our career progression and career ladders for the non-instructional components?
And I'm happy to address that, and if I need assistance, I know who to turn to. We've absolutely had these conversations. So, general government side, we've been putting together career development plans for 25-plus years, and we have 52 career development plans underway. How we can afford it, how we've done this has been methodical. It takes time. We have a number, I think, Paula, how many percentage do you know of our employees? So, over half of our employees in the general government side have some sort of career development opportunity. 4,000 teachers is a large number. It exceeds certainly the number of folks we have in career development in our side. So, as Mr. Sorensen mentioned, we have to be methodical with how we implement teachers alone. But there is a plan going forward for other school staff. We have looked at that with bus drivers, with other folks, there have to be some sort of career development opportunity. It's a matter of timing. Clearly, we heard you loud and clear back in April, the teachers are a priority for the moment. I understand that there's always conversation around bus drivers as well and compensation, especially when you see things going on in the region. But in terms of actual career development aspects, it's gonna come, I assure you, it's just a matter of timing and that multi-year approach.
And I would think that many of the 52 career ladders that you've expressed in general government, there'd be many of those that would correspond with some of the positions that we have. We have a lot, outside of the instruction level, we have a lot of people doing many of the same sorts of things, obviously not exclusively. Y'all have, you know, a whole planning staff, of which we have some people in similar positions, but certainly not the same. So, I would think there'd be a lot of borrowing in that regard. I would also think that there'd be some borrowing, I guess, in, at least from a concept with public safety, as far as our instructional folks. Just out of curiosity, so, when you studied, the public safety people found out that one out of four were experiencing some compression, and you have had career ladders for many, many years, what, as a, sort of as a, let's avoid this happening with our instructional people, what was the issue there that caused one out of four of your, or public safety people to experience compression?
I think Ms. Reed mentioned earlier, we had some policy changes that took place that they didn't quite pay close attention to the impact on compression.
I got you.
And those policy changes created...
I got you.
Some efforts that needed to be fixed.
And you said that, you said one of the things to avoid is that, is making sure that as you think, kinda the law of unintended consequences, that you address one thing, you squeeze the bottom of the balloon, it pops to the top.
And career development will not, it's not gonna fix compression. Compression's gonna be there, that's why it's so important that every three years we do look at this, but it helps mitigate compression. And that's what we're trying to do. Three years down the road, when we look at this again, we're not looking at a $6 million issue.
Right.
There's pockets that we can fix, but we've learned from mistakes, as we always try to do, and policy changes, and that focus on compression is one of those. And that's where I think having general government and schools working together, sharing experiences, I've learned more about teacher salaries... I've learned more about teacher salaries and teacher contracts and, you know, just-
Then you thought we're there, that's right.
-the whole world I've ever learned in my career, and I'm sure school staff would probably say the same about our side, but we've learned from each other, and that's the goal, is to continue to do so in the future.
And I would think that as you do those, every three-year reviews, as you said, it's not starting at zero or less than zero again, there ought to be some markers at this point in time that we step back and say, even before we get to three years, if certain things are appearing, it will give us a heads up that, you know, these are areas where we need to spend our time. So, you know, I expect that that three years will be just a point on the calendar, but not necessarily the only time that we look at it. So, but thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Dr. Cashwell?
Go ahead.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Madam Chair, if I might, just a quick comment that may address some of the questions that have come up regarding the career ladders and this notion of professional development, and I think I just would like to clarify that while the career ladders do offer an opportunity for teachers to learn and grow professionally, and then also receive monetary incentive, if you will, a step on the ladder, this whole look at ladders in general, going even across the teacher group, looking at all staff, really is twofold. One is really about professional development, so how do we want to provide personalized pathways for our staff members, regardless of whether they're teachers or bus drivers, to engage in learning that's meaningful to them or meets their individual goals depending on their needs? So that's something that we'll begin looking at right away, and that's something that we don't, you know, have to wait on, thinking about what the ladder and the monetary incentive pieces will be. But then as we go along, again, thinking about how to build that ladder, that will go along with the steps and the increases, will be part of that. But I don't want anyone to think that we would wait on developing some of that robust professional development for all employees beyond our teachers, because that's something that's very important to us moving forward, is that we begin to really shape comprehensive, robust professional learning pathways that are individualized for various employee groups, whether it be clerical, et cetera, that really meet their individual needs, and get into this idea of badging and micro-credentialing regardless of the monetary incentive piece. But it only becomes a bonus when we're able to get that piece of the ladder in place as well.
And Madam Chair, I think-
Mr. Montgomery.
I salute that, because I think the important thing is that the focus is on the professional development, driving the effort, and then rewarding that effort with, otherwise badging, I could see a circumstance where it can become a, checking a certain number of blocks to get to a certain place, and while, I certainly wouldn't accuse a teacher of doing that, I do know, or anyone else of doing that, I also recognize that that's, if that's the pathway that's laid out, then that's the pathway you choose. So I think it's essential that you do exactly as you said, that it's robust professional development across the board, and it's tied to an opportunity to advance in both career and professionally. So, thank you, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Pike?
Yeah, I just want to say that I recognize a sense of urgency for what's in front of us, and I commend everyone that's been involved with that, but like Mr. Montgomery pointed out, we can't forget the people who are working behind the scenes, bus drivers, school food services, I mean, the whole piece of it, and I know you have similar sets of circumstances too, but the last thing in the world we want to do is to create a gap in terms of that morale-wise. It's really important that we take a look at everything and offer the opportunities across the board. I think that's really important. We all know how difficult it's going to be in the future to attract good quality people in the classroom, but also in support roles. So, and I like the idea of three years, but I think Mr. Montgomery's right, it's an annual thing really that we're going to have to do. If we look at it annually, every three years, like you pointed out, we'll probably be in pretty good shape. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for being here, and it's a great, I mean, it's great news for all of, I think, the people that work for Henrico County. It's exciting times. Thank you very much. And board members, I'm going to suggest that we change up our agenda just a little bit of, consult with Mr. Anderson, we don't need to vote on this, but Ms. Lee Donovan has been sitting here for a long time waiting, and I want to be sure that before our 5:30 budget hearing, we enable her to talk to us. So we're going to skip down to under new business, the naming of Godwin High School's auditorium and theater. Go ahead and let Ms. Donovan take care of business, and that way we're sure she is done before our budget hearing, you don't have to wait for that too. So, anyway, so Lee, we'll let you go ahead and tell us why you're here today.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for allowing me some time today to present a request from the Godwin community for the naming of the Godwin Auditorium for Mr. Mac Damren. This support comes from Mr. John B. McGinty, former Godwin principal, multiple former Godwin teachers, and an overwhelming support from Godwin alumni and their families. I have a letter that I would like to read and present you with this afternoon. Dear members of the school board, I am writing to capture the support of the Godwin community for naming the Godwin Auditorium for Mr. Mac Damren, teacher and director at Godwin for 31 years. In this letter, you will find quotes from over 50 emails and letters that I have received in support of the naming. As a graduate of Godwin and a student of Mr. Damren for four years, I was pleased to see the community's support for this project. And I'll just tell you a couple of things that our community said about Mr. Damren. John B. McGinty, former principal, said Mac was simply a master motivator, and together with our band and choral teachers produced some of the finest musicals in this area. Mac Damren let me, a little band and choir kid, into the theater fold, giving me opportunities to play in the orchestra pit for musicals, try out for roles in school plays, and even end up on stage during those musicals my last two years at Godwin. Teachers like Mac Damren are so important because they build confidence in students and help them develop the skills to do what they love. If I can be half the teacher he was, I will consider it a success. This is from someone who went on to the teaching profession, who's talking of Mac. Mac Damren wasn't just my high school drama teacher, he was a friend, a mentor, and responsible for igniting and fostering a love of theater inside of me. He made me feel like an artist for the first time in my life. His attention to craft and execution is something I still hold dear today. He took my dreams seriously, and with his guidance and direction, I felt comfortable and confident to pursue all of them. So I've captured the over 50 emails and letters that I've received from the community in one letter for you all that I'd like to present to you tonight, and if you have any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them.
And you can hand those to Ms. Harris on the end. Board members, any comments or questions? Mr. Pike, I imagine you have something you would like to add.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank Principal Donovan for the work that she's done. She's been working on this all fall and accumulating ladders, and, you know, even though I wasn't at Godwin, I knew about the work that Mr. Damren was doing on behalf of the students and faculty there in that community, so I would recommend that we support this.
Okay. Any other comments, board members? Mr. Pike, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we support the naming of the Godwin Auditorium in the name of Mr. Damren.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have a new name. Thank you so much.
Just that easy.
Yeah. Do we know, is there anyone here that wants to speak about the, or presentation for the Brooklyn Middle School gym floor? Or do we? I just don't want to hold anybody up if they're here, that's, because we can leave that where it is, or we can do it now, Mr. Reverend Cooper? Okay, all right. So the item number 9.02, it was requested that consideration be given to discussion and approval of naming the Brooklyn Middle School gym floor in honor of former teacher and coach Jerry Perrier. Reverend Cooper, do you have comments?
Madam Chair, colleagues, Dr. Cashwell, Mr. Merrill Gray started campaigning several years ago to name the Brooklyn Middle School gymnasium floor after Coach Jerry Perrier. Coach Perrier arrived at Brooklyn Junior High School in the fall of 1967, where he was assistant coach in football his first year. For the next 15 years, he was head coach of the boys' basketball team. During that time, he became a middle school teacher teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. He also coached the girls' basketball team for three years, the years inclusive of 1980 through 1982. For one year, he tested the waters and coached JV boys' basketball at Henrico High School, where the team was regular season and district champs, but his calling was ultimately middle school. His Brooklyn teams were consistently county champs, and he was coach of the year several times. He adored his players, coaches, managers, scorekeepers, and anyone sitting in the stands cheering them on. He loved winning, and he made his players winners through hard work, discipline, and a caring staff at Brooklyn Middle School. Though he gave up his coaching whistle and sneakers in 1983, he remained with the county until 1995. With the support of Brooklyn Middle School's principal, Dr. Nick Barlett, the Brooklyn Middle School community, it is my great honor to move that the Brooklyn Middle School gymnasium floor be named after Coach Jerry Perrier.
Okay, thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Basketball court's renamed.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So now we're going to move back into our regular order. We don't normally do this, but we're going to go back up to the superintendent, and we're at item number four.
All right.
Madam Superintendent, just so we're all aware.
Yes, all aware. Item 4.01, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-2 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct. The name of the student has been protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Okay, board members, we have the opportunity to fully review these couple of cases this afternoon during our closed session. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-2? Hearing no motion, the motion fails.
For the next item, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-5 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct. Name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-5?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Montgomery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And, well, and actually, since motion, the other motion for student case S-2 failed, we do not need to take up the next one for the grad center.
4.02 is moot.
Right, so we'll move on.
Yep, the next item, 4.03, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve a waiver of tuition for student case number 18-19-TW-02. Name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion for the waiver of tuition for this student?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For the next item, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel for the 2018-19 school year.
Is there a motion to approve the administrative appointments?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Montgomery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the school board has approved Christina Alsop, Director of Federal Programs, as well as Brooke Thompson, Professional Development and Learning Education Specialists, and the individuals will be introduced at our monthly meeting this evening.
Okay.
All right, and for the next item, under instruction, 5.01, we'll have a review of the proposed 2019-2020 school calendar, and Dr. Tigan is here with that information.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, I am here to share feedback on the draft of the 2019-2020 calendar, which was first shared with you at the work session on October 25th. The feedback is from our online survey, which has been posted since October 29th. This is the draft that resulted from the calendar committee with input from the Teacher Advisory Council. As a reminder, our calendar committee consists of students, parents, faith leaders, teachers, and administrators, and the Teacher Advisory Council has a representative from each one of our schools. And as a reminder, any calendar that we adopt must have the first day of school after Labor Day, as we do not meet the waiver requirements for a division-wide pre-Labor Day start. The school calendar must contain 180 days or 990 hours of instruction. We always start with a recommendation for the 180 days, and then rely on the banked time to cover inclement weather, which is really pertinent this year. And in Henrico, even though we can't start until after Labor Day, we do want to end the year by mid-June, and so those are kind of the constraints under which the calendar is created. We also work as a region to have common winter and spring breaks. As of today, the information from around the region is Hanover has proposed the same winter and spring breaks. Richmond plans to follow suit with what Henrico and Hanover are doing, and Chesterfield's plan was unknown at the time for winter break, but they intended to follow the spring break. They're just behind their processes with the new superintendent. And so you will see here, the proposed draft of the calendar, you also have a copy, as I know this is impossible to read. We received online feedback from 1,066 people, that was up considerably from last year. Last year, we had about 700, around 700. So, and that was between October 29th and November 26th. Forty-three percent of our respondents were employees, that's not that different than previous years. Forty-two percent were parents, and 13% identified as both employee and parent within Henrico This calendar maintains the 180 instructional days. It continues to provide teachers with more flexibility as to when to hold the parent-teacher conferences to better align with student needs. We do plan to eliminate the holding of conferences on Election Day moving forward. Similarly, if there are any primary elections held during the school day, we would follow our processes used for inclement weather, and that would mean we would rely on banked time to cover that lost instruction time. And teachers have also been allocated time to complete their required trainings. They can do that either outside the school day, or they can do it outside the school year, and so, but we wanted to make sure that we accounted for that time that they put into their required training. There are eight full days for teacher professional development and clerical times. Five of those days are during Teacher Work Week in August. August 14th would be a full-day professional learning coordinated by our central office staff. November 5th and January 27th would be full clerical days at the end of the first nine weeks and at the end of the semester. The calendar committee did recommend adding additional professional learning time for teachers if they are going to implement the Henrico learner profile and the deeper learning model to fidelity, and to learn how to better meet the social-emotional needs of our students. These half-days were front-loaded into the fall, with just the exception of the February date that would be for school-based professional learning. The December 16th date that was originally on the calendar shown to you in October has been shifted to December 9th based on feedback, and you may also recall that the Teacher Advisory Committee suggested we gather feedback on whether it's better to have these early release days on the same day of the week, or whether to alternate days of the week. And 71% of the respondents said they favored a consistent day of the week each month. I think it helps parents with planning, but I think with that amount of support, it's also our teachers supporting that. With winter break for December 23rd through January 3rd, that received a 73.5% approval rating approving that the winter break as proposed. With spring break, it was 76.2% of the respondents approved of the spring break as proposed. Midterm exams will remain prior to winter break, but we've heard from many parents prior to and during this week to share their opinions on the administration of midterms. While the majority of the recommendations have been to eliminate them, we plan to form a task force after winter break to do an analysis of our overall assessment program- we plan to form a task force after winter break to do an analysis of our overall assessment program to include midterms and make recommendations for next year. And I'm happy to hear any feedback you all might have for recommendations. Barring any significant changes, this is on the agenda for approval at this evening's meeting.
Questions, board members?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Cox.
I was surprised to hear that our teachers, 71% of them, like having it on the same day, because I did hear from a lot, especially that are on block schedules or such, that were worried that the same classes would be, were being missed. Also heard from a lot of parents who are asking, you know, why Monday, why not Friday? Because it would be a little easier with childcare. Monday, you're starting back. It's a little harder to juggle that schedule. We have a lot of Monday meetings, a lot in the business world. And, you know, the Friday piece also would allow perhaps parents to do some getaways or some adventures or some things, you know, maybe they could take the afternoon off as well and do some things for their family, which to me also speaks to our health and wellness piece that we are trying to put forth here as one of our cornerstones, too. So I would be really curious as to why we're going with Mondays. Have we thought about doing Fridays? Does any of my colleagues feel, you know, any information or any positions on this?
I would agree with you. I've heard the same thing from parents. The number of half-days, but also the placement on Mondays. I'm curious what the committee, why the committee. I agree with Mrs. Cox.
The feedback from the teachers and the administrators was the freshness of teachers for, you know, for having professional development early in the week, rather than when you get to the end of the week, a lot of times, you know, it's been a long week. And so trying to be professionally developed at that point, they feel it'd be more effective earlier in the week.
But can I add something to? I'm also thinking of that student who, you know, they're getting back, they started with their work week, I mean, sorry, with their school week, and yep, boom, you know, seven of these Mondays are half-days. And so I think it really can get things out of kilter, too, in that steadiness that we need to have with our school weeks as well. I mean, again, I just think that Fridays, I think it's better for our families, it's better for our students, and our teachers have to be there on Fridays anyway. I mean, that's just what I would put out there.
I would agree with you. I, I mean, if you remember, years and years ago, we used to do Wednesdays. Everybody hated that.
Yes, yes.
But I agree with the, Monday, we're off to a fresh start, we get rolling, boom, we stop, we go back, and now we're back in on Tuesday. There's just something that it's the mental thing of, on Friday afternoon, the kids are gone, the teachers have that opportunity to learn. I don't know what the rest of you think, but I would agree with Mrs. Cox. I mean, it's, I have trouble with it.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Pike?
I don't think there are any easy answers on it. I can remember as a high school assistant principal, when we had assembly programs and pep rallies and all those things, that we tried to work so that we did not ding the same class periods. So I think that's part of what's being said here, too. You know, it does, picking the day is tough, and I understand the rationale that they've given here, and I understand the rationale here. I wish there was a way that we didn't have to do them at all, that there was another mechanism, another piece where this could be offered and still have an impact. But I'm not quite sure what that is.
But I agree with you about the classes. If you look at Freeman and Godwin, you're going to have those classes, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh period, whatever, on the same, those seven days will be missed unless they decide to flip and flop those days. And I assume with the block schedule schools, they can flop between day one and day two and all that. But I just think that adds to the confusion, too. I don't know. We need a suggestion as to whether we move forward or throw it back to the committee.
And I think we're into new territory again with looking at adding the professional development embedded within the calendar and within the school year, and making it ongoing within their work. You know, I think there's going to be value, no matter what day of the week that is. And if there's a preference for us to try Fridays, I mean, there's always, we try Fridays or we try Mondays, and we come back and get feedback from both our families and our teachers and students. And then could maybe make different decisions moving forward. But I think that any decision...
Right. Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, we, my recollection is we arrived on having it the same day of the week after considerable feedback.
Right.
That we, because we did use to move it about, and it was, the idea was it would be more effective to be permanent. It was more preferred. Interestingly, if you look at the numbers, about 71%, I think was the number, prefer the same day. The percentage was much lower. That was across the board. But with teachers, it was, I think it was closer to 50/50. I don't recall specifically, but it wasn't at 70%, which is consistent with the anecdote that you shared. You know, the, it would be interesting if we did, if we continued this year on Monday, for example, and then next year, from the start, we said, all right, let's go with Friday, and build the calendar from the beginning, saying we're going to have our half-days, professional development days on Friday, and do a careful comparison of what people provide as far as feedback goes, with the idea of saying, you know, we can always revisit it, but let's try to come to a conclusion once and for all about what not only is preferred, but what is most effective for teachers and for students and for families. You know, if you look at it now, and you try to, if we tried to move, I mean, you look at December, if you said, all right, well, December 9th would be, Monday would be moved to a Friday, would it be the 13th before exams? Would it be the 6th, so that you're not too close to exams? If you move it to 6th and then 18th, you know, there's quite a bit of moving parts that went to land it on Monday for now. And we've gotten quite a bit of feedback as it exists now, which is something that we can go from. But, you know, I'm less inclined to say, let's push it back and try to move it to Fridays, sort of on the fly, not completely so, because it's not, you know, we still have time. My suggestion would be that we go with what we have, recognize that, and if it's something that the superintendent believes is worthy of further careful study, that we maybe next year, we purposely shift it, half-days for professional development to Fridays, and then do a kind of a purposeful evaluation of just that single question. Let's just zero in on which day is the most effective for students.
I think teacher attendance and student attendance would be something important to look at.
I think that what would happen is, a lot of Fridays would be, I don't know about teachers.
Mr. Moose is actually shaking his head on this point.
Teacher attendance is what I would be concerned about. We're doing something on a large scale, and if they see it as a half-day, don't value it, and we're trying to provide activity or a touch down, and you got people missing, that would be my concern.
There we go. Any other comment?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Pike?
I know it probably doesn't make sense, but I was wondering if we could do a split, right, for the upcoming year? Do the first semester Mondays, second semester Fridays, and then do a study and see how that works from that standpoint. The only one I really questioned was the one in December 9th. I just don't think that's a good fit with the exams right there. But, you know, just trying to make things more confusing, so.
I would also caution that we usually don't have early release days second semester because they get eliminated due to inclement weather.
That's right. That's right. Well, now, I actually, I really applaud doing our professional development while our teachers are in the building as opposed to after-hours and things like that. I absolutely agree that we need to do that. I just, I just think about the parents who have those Monday federal holidays, so they're off those days, but their kids are in school, and then we have some half-days where their kids are out of school. I don't know. I just think monkeying with Mondays may not be the best. But, but there is that Friday slump, we're out of here attitude, so I get that, too. Board members, we need a consensus.
I think we've heard that we don't have a consensus for that this year. But I would like to, as Mr. Montgomery said, let's pose that question next year to see.
Revisit.
Because I do appreciate what Mr. Moose had to say, but I also think that, you know, it's important that our teachers be in the building and that they understand the importance of professional development and not to be off on those days or to ask off for those days.
Okay, so we will be voting on this tonight, and, but appreciate you taking the feedback back to the committee, and we'll see how it goes for this go-around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's get a couple of them, and then we'll break.
Next, Mr. Sorenson has two proposed revisions to policies that he will be sharing for your review. One will be to policy P.1-03, non-discrimination, and also policy P.6-04-004, complaints and grievances. Mr. Sorenson?
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I do, in fact, have two policies to review with you tonight, but just want to point out one thing, that at the work session in November, we brought before you policy P.6-04-004, complaints and grievances. So at that meeting, I stated that based on a comment from a citizen, we really wanted to step back and look at all of our non-discrimination policies as a package and then present all the edits to you at once. That is, in fact, what we've done. So now to item 6.01, policy P.1-03, non-discrimination. The proposed edits clarify the types of specific complaints and reporting locations. The policy is posted on the revisions website for public review and comment, and staff will bring the policy back to the board on January 10th, 2019.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sorenson? Thank you very much.
And I have one more for you. 6 dash, I'm sorry, 6.02, policy P.6-04-004, complaints and grievances. One proposed edit more clearly states the school board's position on non-discrimination. A second proposed edit moves reporting procedure to a regulation versus the policy. The edited regulation has also been posted on board docs for review. The policy will also, there will be posted for review and comment, and I'll bring the policy back before you on January 10th.
Any questions for Mr. Sorenson on this one? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we have a planned public input session on the budget, so we're going to have to suspend our adjourn. We'll just go right into our, I'm getting an instruction, to, into our public input session, and then we'll come back to our agenda. Talk about a yo-yo agenda today. Anyway, so the next item on our agenda is the public input session to solicit public input on the proposed 2019-2020 annual financial plan. Some citizens may have signed up in advance, and we will follow that list first and then allow anyone else who wishes to speak to come to the podium to do so after we have completed the list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly identify yourself and state what organization, if any, you are representing. To assist you in tracking your time, there will be a timekeeping system on the podium. Speakers will have a four-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here tonight to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the board. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in individual dialogue with the audience or whoever is at the podium. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing your input on our budget. Mrs. Board, do we have anyone signed up? We do not. So is there anyone who wishes to speak to the board about our annual financial plan? Come on down. If there's anybody else, you can come sit on the front row, and I'll call you in turn. Familiar faces.
Good evening. My name is Joe Vaidounis. My kids are in the Henrico School District. I'm representing myself this evening and speaking specifically to Freeman High School. And so my time's limited. I have three items I want to run down with you real quickly. First, I'd like to thank you all for your support of the new practice field plan for Freeman High School that is very much needed. As most of you know, Freeman has very limited field space, so having that new facility will be a real asset. Unfortunately, lights, field lights are not included with that field. So really, what we're getting is about a half a field, if you think about it. We don't have practice, or the teams aren't practicing outdoors now, but if they were at 5 o'clock, that's it. But you have that situation in the late fall and the early spring, and so field lights, again, would be a real asset and would allow more use of that facility. So how do you, how do you pay for that? You have an item at Freeman to replace the gym floor, the small gym, $160,000. That's FY 1920. I've confirmed the small gym is not used for actual game participation. It's used for practice. It's used for gym. And what I tell my kids is, you know, replacement of the floor sounds like a want as opposed to a need. There, I think there are better uses, and $160,000 is an awful lot to spend to make the floors look better. My son is a wrestler, and they roll out mats and they practice, and it works just great. We have a football banquet in there this fall. That was fantastic, too. I'd actually encourage facilities to look at other techniques. Just quick internet search, there's something called Screen and Recode, which basically takes off the top surface, and then you put a finish down. I've been told that the floor is too thin to sand, and that's the reason for the wholesale replacement. $160,000. And the last item is one that I'm probably the most passionate about, and that is the fencing that exists, the chain-link fencing that exists around the campus. A bunch of that fencing is obsolete. It's in disrepair. It's just a plain eyesore. It's unnecessary. And actually, I think, and it could potentially be a barrier. God forbid, you know, one of the things that kids are taught, first order of business is get out. And there are areas that would literally trap kids or first responders. And I can point those out. I know my time is limited here. But I would just ask for a complete reassessment of all the fencing. Take down what's not necessary. What is deemed to be necessary? Let's replace it with something that's modern and it's not 40 years old. I can point out, there are gates, okay, that don't close. There are gates that aren't connected to anything. Why is that? So that's a low-cost item. So, but, you know, and maybe it's not appropriate as a budget item, but that's something that I would ask to be looked at. So thank you very much for your time. You can tell I'm a little bit nervous. It's the first time I've spoken with you all. Some of you individually...
That's good. If you could leave your contact information over, there's a sign-in form over there.
Okay.
There should be, yeah, so that we can have a staff member call, follow up with you. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Susan's got you. Go ahead. Affirmo your face to us all. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you tonight?
Good.
Jennifer Andrews. I'm a Henrico resident and employee at Godwin High School, and speaking for the Henrico Education Association. So as you heard earlier, the Salary Compression Committee presented to you tonight, and they presented to the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday. And we want to just extend our support for, to include the monies that it would take to decompress salaries for the school employees within the school budget. And certainly, there's money that will be needed from the general government side as well to address salary compression there. But it seems like there's a greater issue with salary compression here on the school side. When I came to Henrico, 15... 15 years ago, I did not know that I was going to take a $5,000 a year pay cut to come from Chesapeake to Henrico. So this is something near and dear to my heart, and I'm also, so, but we do want to make sure that we express our opinion that, that this money should be allocated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to speak to the board? Mr. Sorenson, come on up.
I didn't, I didn't sign up, but I would like to update the board if I could do that. I'm sorry.
You're a citizen. You can speak.
I just, just want to update you guys. So we go out each year, or have, have community meetings. We had a couple that we need to reschedule, so I just want to make sure the board's clear on that and get it to the community. We had an event scheduled December 11th that was, that was postponed due to the snow. We also had an event on December 4th. There was a scheduling error in the, in the budget office. So we did reach out to the people that we knew of that, that showed up at the Fairfield Library, offered to meet them, named the place and location, we will, time and place, we will be there. So we have reached out to those folks. We have re-advertised those meetings. So we'll meet at the Easton Rec Center, December 18th at 6:30. We'll also have a meeting at Libby Mill Library, December 18th at 6:30. So keeping a list of all the questions, we'll answer the questions, contact the people with the answers to the questions, and also provide you a list of the, the same information. So you'll have that as you can.
And you said December 18th at 6:30?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sorenson? Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board about the annual financial plan? Hearing no one, we will go back to our jumpy.
Yes, and I believe we were on item seven, operations.
We were.
And Susan Moore is here to provide us a review of AE Services contract for Tucker and Highland Springs High School, school's replacement designs. We're excited.
Susan, we're excited, Susan.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. We have four items we're bringing before you tonight for consideration and for action at later on meeting. And the first is review of the AE Services contract for Tucker and Highland Springs High School replacement design. We have recommended that that design go to Mosley Architects in the amount of $7,799,572. There is an explanation of our process attached to the board paper. We had four respondents that submitted proposals, and we interviewed all four respondents, and we looked, we allowed these respondents to bring prototypes to the table for us to review as part of the process. This is a little bit different than what we normally do. Of all of the prototypes that were brought forward by each of the respondents, the committee went and looked at every prototype. So we actually went and toured the school prototypes that were brought before us. We're excited to say, Mosley was the successful offer and the recommended offer, and I open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions, board members? Mr. Montgomery?
Briefly, Madam Chair. The, is it the, is it the contract for AE Services, does it include construction oversight as well, or is it just design?
It includes construction oversight as well.
So, and I note that normally, we're getting this for about 7.7 million. Is that what it was? Or, let's say $8 million.
Yes.
And we're building two schools each of approximately $80 million. So ordinarily, if my recollection is about a 10% of the, of the cost in the past for AE Services that included oversight. Is that roughly correct?
Probably generally around 8%.
Okay.
Is what we would see. We're down, I believe, around 5%.
Right.
And that's because we're looking at a prototype use, and we have two schools in the contract.
So, so I just, I thought that we were recognizing some, some savings there. So that's good. So roughly speaking, about $3 million maybe, or $5 million?
Give or take, yes.
Yeah, okay. Million here, million there. That's what they say, right? So that's good. I'm glad we were able to, to recognize that savings as well. So, thank you, Madam.
Any questions? Any other comments?
Madam Chair, quick question. So I noticed that basically the two prototypes that they brought, Mosley brought, were our two schools that they did.
Yes, sir.
So were our two schools that they did that much more, kind of summarize it, because I mean, it's just like, you wonder, Mosley just keeps designing our schools, should we even put it out for bid, because they keep winning the bid. So I just was wondering about that, you know, that, that perception.
Yes. Well, we made it fair for everybody, that everybody could bring a prototype to the table. That was the purpose in us going to look at every prototype that was presented. We looked at each prototype from a, with our educational group in the mix, as well as our construction and maintenance group in the mix. So it was looked at from a plan standpoint with flow, circulation. Each offer also showed us how each prototype could be adapted to today's pedagogies of high school education. So we would anticipate some interior changes to each of the prototypes in order to bring it into the current standards, as well as potential exterior changes to the prototypes, because ultimately, the game plan would be to make some exterior changes so that each school feels that that's their school, that it's not just a cookie cutter that's been plopped down.
Good. Wonderful. Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next one.
Our next item is for the review of assignment for AE Services from BCWH Incorporated to Quinn Evans Architects. That is our, BCWH Incorporated is our architect for Tuckahoe Middle School renovation. They were recently acquired by Quinn Evans Architects, so this is simply a legality to transfer the contract over into the new name for the firm.
Any questions, board members? Okay, thank you. And then we have a right-of-way for...
Two more items, I believe.
Sorry.
Yep, right-of-way.
Our third item is review of the Dominion Energy Virginia right-of-way agreement for Chamberlain Elementary School. This right-of-way agreement is ordered to bring more power, or not more, but a new power location into Chamberlain Elementary as part of the renovation process.
Any questions, board members? Okay, keep going. And the last one.
Our final one is review of Dominion Energy right-of-way at Brooklyn Middle School. This is part of Dominion's strategic underground program, so this would be an underground line that runs along the edge of the property. Up for Chamberlain and Brooklyn, there are plaits in the attached document, so you would see where that easement occurs. And again, this is a formality for that program.
Okay. Any questions, board members? And we will be voting on these this evening. Questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that concludes items from the superintendent.
Okay, board members, is there any unfinished business to be brought to the board? Skipping down. Um, are you, is she, are you, now? Mrs. Cox, did you have some new business?
I do, I do.
Because that's not actually on here.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, this past weekend, Mrs. Olson, the principal at Holiday Elementary, Mrs. Moore, and myself attended a lovely cricket tournament, and we were presented, the school board was presented this beautiful plaque here that I have not broken yet.
I'll pass it down to our chairman.
Chairman? Thank you. On behalf of the Central Virginia Cricket Association, and they are thanking the school board for allowing their association to play at Holiday Elementary School for 25 years, 1994 to 2018. Zulfi Khan invited us to come to it. We didn't know we were getting an award. We did know that Ms. Holiday, I'm sorry, that Mrs. Olson for Holiday was going to be receiving a check because the Cricket Association is very kind to Holiday and helps them out in many different ways. So we were excited to be there for that. Holiday is, this is the last year for the, the Central Virginia Cricket Association to play there due to our new elementary school in the Brooklyn District that will be coming on board. So their new home is at Wilder Middle School, and talking with the players, they seem to be excited and happy with their new home. The cricket program here in Henrico County has been growing, and there is a new field and such in the western part, in the deep, in your area, in Deep Run. Yep, it is. And there also is another one in Chesterfield. So they've gone in these 25 years to having one field, to now that there are three in Central Virginia, and they wanted to just thank the board for allowing them to play there and the continued partnership that we have. I'm going to jump into, I had a second thing and a third thing. Second thing was Lakeside Elementary School celebrated its 70th year.
Yay.
And, and we were very excited. It was last month, and Mr. Pike was one of the guest speakers there. He did a wonderful job. There was many current and former teachers and students, and they had a lot of the yearbooks out and lots of pictures, and it was a wonderful evening. And quickly, the third thing was, Mr. Pike and I attended the Henrico Historical Association. There, they have a project essay-type contest with 5th graders in Henrico County, and it's a great way for our students to celebrate and learn about Henrico County's over 400-year history. And I just would like to thank the many teachers and principals that came to the event. This year, there was 168 people at the event. It was the, the highest attendance that they have had, and it was so many teachers and principals. Our superintendent came as well, and one student even picked her as the, the celebrity to find out a little bit about, and someone that has impacted Henrico County. So that was really nice, and it's 16 years in the making. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Wonderful events going on. And Reverend Cooper, did you have some new business?
Well, I did, Madam, Madam Chair, colleagues to Dr. Cashwell. So we had three, two, three days of unexpected snow. We weren't prepared for closing these three days. My kids were home, and I had to do two grocery store runs, you know, to feed my three children. But I received a couple inquiries in regards to what is our process for, for families who have food needs. So in contacting Ms. Pam Bell, she was very, very helpful in, in kind of sharing with me the parameters of our backpack programs in which we send the, the meals home with children that we've identified. But there are, there are others who we weren't able to accommodate because, one, resources, two, because of insinuating circumstances that we're prepared for. So I want to kind of ask Dr. Cashwell, I did a little research, and for instance, in 2016, the U.S. Department of Agriculture Child Nutrition Program allows for meals to be served in uninterrupted class, when the schools are closed, and they will reimburse school systems for opening and providing those meals. Roanoke City Schools has 87% of their students eligible for free and reduced lunch. So what they do is, they open five city schools, and they're reimbursed to provide meals for families who may not be able to have the foods that they need. If you figure, you have some of our students that lunch and breakfast are provided by schools, and for some of them, that's the only meals they get. So what happens when we have three days that we weren't prepared for, that these students and families are relying on nutrition from our schools. So I want Dr. Cashwell to kind of, if she could, and her staff, to look at our ability. I know it's, it's comprehensive, not just us, Department of Public Works, I get all of that. But, you know, I think in some of our areas, when our, our population is so high, who depend so heavily on meals from us to, to, to basically feed their families, I think it would be important for us morally to at least consider, you know, our program, to see what we could do, if not anything else. I know Ms. Bell and her staff, persons can call, and, and they'll provide food if we are able to do it for them. But we're limited with staff. We have a hard time with transportation, so we need some more collaborative partnerships with community partners to ensure that. But I just think we can do a little bit more, given our high population of free and reduced lunch in our school divisions, and how many families are adversely impacted by situations such as this perfect storm. I mean, you know, you, you can't prepare or plan for it, but I think that we can always analyze, we can always evaluate to, to execute even better. That's, if, if Dr. Cashwell would be amenable to that, I hope she will be.
Dr. Cashwell?
Yes, that's absolutely something we can look at. I know that our schools individually, even when they're anticipating that we could be closed for weather, we'll send home items and book bags, and as you learned, and of course, our community and family engagement folks are always working to try to close those gaps anywhere we know they are. But we'll absolutely take a look at doing something potentially more systemically, and what our food services program may allow, in particular, when, when we think about the funding that we receive from a number of sources, whether that might allow us to engage in something that would be a little more comprehensive. So we'll absolutely take a look and report back. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you very much, Reverend Cooper, for bringing that forward. Is there any other new business? Okay, hearing none. I will announce it bright and early tomorrow morning. At 7:30 a.m. is our legislative breakfast with our Henrico leaders in the General Assembly. We will meet with senators and delegates to talk about our legislative program and have some time to talk about issues facing Henrico County. That is tomorrow morning. And then our next work session is January 10th at 2:00 p.m., right here at the New Bridge Learning Center. We will adjust times as needed. Hearing no further business, we will adjourn.